All this meeting. Call this meeting, regular meeting of council for Wednesday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty one. To order this meeting is being held virtually, it will be broadcast on YouTube and Rogers cable. Are there any? Declarations of conflict of interest with respect to the agenda?
Yes, I have one in your worship.
Counselor.
An item CSR two thousand, two thousand and twenty one dash seven five.
Oh, yes.
Accessibility permits. As I am a holder of one of those permits, I will be removing myself from the. Discussion on that.
Thank you. Madam clerk, do we need to pull that? It's in the consent agenda, I believe, unless somebody else can pull it. So do we need to treat that separately so the counselor downer can vote on the other matters on the consent agenda?
I believe we can perhaps amend the motion. And have, we could do the vote on everything except that one and then do a separate vote on.
Thank, yeah.
The one that he pulled. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I was gonna defer to either Mr. Dano or Mr. Campbell.
Do you know, do you have any? Sense of the appropriate. Procedure here?
Run that by me again, sir.
The council downer has a conflict with respect to one of the items on the. Dealing with the, the. Mobility or AODA findings with respect to parking meters. I'm wondering if we could pull that or separate it from the rest of the consent agenda. Allowing the counselor to vote on the rest of the consent agenda and then bring it up separately as another matter for consent.
Absolutely. That sounds like appropriate to me as well, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you. So madam clerk, if we can do that.
Okay, I'll just draft it up.
Thank you. Oh, that's good. Again. One seven. So. I'll just read the last should have read this. It said, I'll read it now, which is the land acknowledgement. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory for the Anishinaabe people. Now known as the Chippewa Tri-council comprised of both the First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the preconfederation treaty five and treaty sixteen and included within the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty three. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory here on Wendat. And the historic homelands of the Maytee, that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. With that, I just ask everybody if they might. Join with me in a moment of silent reflection and give some thought to those folks out in the west who are. Going through a rather tumultuous time with the excessive rain and flooding. Thank you very much. So I have a motion moved by Council Wasevsky, seconded by counselor prose that the regular con- contents, rather, the regular council agenda for November seventeenth. Twenty twenty one be approved by moving item fifteen point one. Councillor Gordon motion respecting was that residential and light pollution.
And find them.
So council, council, you've heard the motion and are there any comments or questions with respect to? None, then all in favor? Thank you very much. So. We now have moved by. Deputy Mayor Ross, seconded by counselor downer that the items. And related recommendations contained within November seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Consent items have been considered by council to be adopted by, be adopted with the exception of rather. Item five point four point one CSR twenty twenty one dash seventy revised traffic common policy guide. Item five point four point nine CSR twenty twenty one seventeen. Midland twenty twenty one finding our way update report back twenty twenty one. And item. CSR twenty twenty one dash seven five. Items related to parking for people with disability. These, these will be considered separately, first two under section ten. Reports and other items withdrawn from council agenda for council's consideration. Sorry, that's just trying to. Everybody understands what I've just said there. Please raise your hand and I'll do it again. Okay, everybody seems to be good with that. So any comments or questions with respect to consent agenda, councilman?
Thank you. No, it's great that we defer some of these, not defer, but are going to speak to them at the committee. Of the whole. I just wanted a question for Mr. Dano. Thank you for the update on the staffing. Where do we go from here? Report. And the only question that I had was around, well, we talked about the strategic plan. Which were pre-pandemic strategic plan and all the priorities have certainly been. Everything's been thrown out the window, thrown up in the air. Just curious about. What some of the achievable items that we might be able to achieve under the strategic plan with the remaining year that we have. And just some thoughts on that. Thank you.
Is this with respect to Mr. Dano's report to council?
Yeah, was that pulled as well?
That's cool.
Okay, I guess we'll talk about that in a minute.
Hang on to that question. It's a good one. I saw councillor Gordon and deputy mayor Ross, please.
Thanks. Just a quick note about, pardon me, the draft new procedural policy. So this draft is available for the public to review. Of course, we've got it for our review. We have until sometime in late November to submit comments and concerns that are on it. There's also going to be a public meeting. So when the public meeting date is announced, maybe it was already, but I can't remember it off the top of my head, but watch for that public meeting because that'll be your opportunity. The procedure policy is just for those of you watching along is basically the rules how we do business as a council. And there's a lot of it's really just procedural. And there's also some new additions and changes in it that I know that have caught me, you know. A little unaware, some of them I suspected would find their way in there and they'll be subject to debate and ratification at some point or perhaps modification. But I encourage members of the council or sorry, member of the public who like to engage with the municipality. To read this carefully because there are some sections in it that could impact the way you engage or if you engage with us. And I do encourage you to take the time between now and the public meeting to review this carefully and see if it serves democracy as you see it in our little municipality. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, and I would, the actual, I believe, the date for public input is December the eighth. And the time to get your comments in is just by December seventeenth. And it will then be debated, I believe, at the first meeting in, first meeting in January. For those folks who are, as you say, are interested in these things and. Do encourage everybody to read it. It is a seminal document. It governs how council operates and it's. It's, it's a bit of a turgid read and a bit dry, but there are some really good points and there's the council. Deputy Mayor Ross.
Thank you, worship. I'm fine. I, councillor Gordon covered what I wanted to say. I wanted to make sure and yourself. I wanted to make sure of the comments with regards to that item were in by the seventeenth. And December seventeenth, but it was covered. So thank you very much for bringing that up and we'll move the meeting on. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So any further comments with respect to the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. That carries well. So then we have. Single item that has been deferred from the consent agenda. I don't have the motion here. Oh, here it is. I think it's here. No, it's not. So. Basically, item five point four. Slide it here. CSR twenty twenty one. Dash seven five with respect to free parking for accessible permits has been pulled. Councillor Downer has. Conflict, councillor, you filed appropriate notice to the clerk, please. And so basically that it's that staff report CSR twenty twenty one dash seven five. Free parking for accessible permits be received for information. You've heard the motion I need. Here, do Deputy Mayor Ross moving? And. Councillor. Councillor Maine, second please, if you're okay with that. So comments or questions, please, from council, councillor Gordon. Councillor Gordon.
Thank you very much. So as council and members watching will recall, this came to us sort of as a last second motion without notice. From councillor Cunningham and it was something that I think. I really, I supported. I can't remember how everyone else went on it, but we ended up deferring it to the accessibility advisory committee. Because clearly it's an issue that is in their, their wheelhouse. And it wouldn't make sense for us to either, you know, approve it or deny it without their input, you know, or else why even have a advisory committee? So in our wisdom collectively, we sent it there and they met and discussed this and. In their own words, it was probably the most. Sort of contentious topic they've ever had and it took them a little off guard and it was quite the meeting. Now, I wasn't able to watch it live. I, I did request to get a copy of the link to get access to it. We're not posting these things on YouTube anymore. But council was provided today with a link. And I watched that meeting in earnest because I really wanted to understand the discussion. Around this topic that ultimately led to the staff report that, for those of you that follow along. Came to us that basically says, no, let's not offer. Free parking for people with accessibility permits. So I'm completely content to accept the recommendation of the committee. But I wanted to see and hear, you know, how they came to it. And although, you know, the meeting was, was long and it was kind of meandering. At the end, their decision or the recommendation, I should say, was that it, it, it just wasn't the right fit. And they came up with some other recommendations they thought would be better served. The municipality and, you know, I'm reminded that there was members on that committee who have physical disabilities. And other disabilities, you can't see, but definitely at least one person. Who is in a wheelchair much of the time and, and has lived experience in ways that I could only try to empathize with. So. As much as I was kind of hoping the, the recommendation come back and see us, you know, giving the same entitlement to. People with these disability permits as we do veterans. It turns out that the wisdom for the collective wisdom from the committee is that we shouldn't do that. And there were some other recommendations. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm going to vote with the recommendations of the committee. Even though they're a little bit not where my heart is, but that is why we have them and we value their input and the time and effort they spent deliberating on this. And to simply set it aside to follow my own personal feelings, I think would be disingenuous to the committee process. So that's where I'm at on it. I'll be supporting this. Recommendation tonight.
Councillor, any further comments with respect to this item? Seeing none, then all those in favor? Thank you. That too carries. We now have a motion moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Gordon, the council resolved into the committee of the whole. I doubt there are any comments on this, at least I hope. Actually, no, I doubt there are. So all in favor? Thank you. It's been a long day. That carries. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, your worship. But in a whole, we have no presentations. Well, we do have a deputation this evening. Traffic observation in support of calming action on Fourth Street between Young Street and Hugo Avenue. And we have Mr. Coke Steak. I apologize if I got it wrong, but Mr. Coke Steak to provide a presentation to council. Madam clerk, is Mr. Coke Steak, oh, I see. Mr. Coke Steak with us today. Welcome, welcome to council today, sir.
Thank you very much. You did pronounce that correctly.
Wonderful. Thank you. Uh, I want to remind you that you have ten minutes and there may be a couple of questions after your presentation with. With regards to clarity and et cetera. So, Mr. Coke Steak, podium's all yours.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate being invited tonight to come and discuss or enlighten you of some of the issues we're dealing with on Fourth Street. And this is forth between Young and Hugo. So I know there's been a lot of talk about. Traffic in other parts of Fourth Street. Anyway, we've lived on Fourth Street for twenty years and I've noticed an increase in the volume and speed of traffic. Over the last few summers. So we decided to see if other neighbors on the street. Felt the same way of us. So anyway, we decided to put together a survey and interview those people and we came up with some of the traffic issues that I'd like to bring to your attention. And the liability involved in that and some potential solutions. That we, that we're suggesting as well and some suggestions from some of the residents on the street. Slide two, please. Okay, so this is some of the background things we learned during the survey. We learned that there was three previous petitions. And I'm going to have to move something out of the way here so I can see. Okay, there, there are three previous petitions. One was in two thousand nineteen by Bill Molesworth and, and that recommended better truck route signs, traffic calming strategies and OPP enforcement. And just as a little bit of a, a back, background to this is that Fourth Street is designated a forty kilometer zone. It was posted as that. And this is due to a, a three degree slope on the northbound and four point two degrees south, southbound. And this slope results in a slight line, a sideline over the crest of the hill of approximately eighty one meters. We, we paced this off or sorry, we measured this with a tape measure so that a vehicle coming up one sided hill can only see eighty one meters over that, over that hill. And Transportation of Canada recommends a stopping distance of a hundred and sixty meters at fifty kilometers per hour. And we've been told that although it's posted at forty, most people are doing fifty, sixty and somebody is doing seventy. And they're going to need at least a hundred and sixty meters to stop and we only have eighty one. And this is the crux of the problem on Fourth Street. So the progress to date has been a heavy truck sign, no left turn on Young Street. It's, it's unfortunately, it's twenty kilometers from the intersection. It's a little too close. But and also the, the town enacted calming by creating a designated parking lane on the east side of the street. But the lines haven't been paid recently. The problem here is drivers don't slow down and they swerve around these parked cars, creating another safety hazard. Next slide, please. So this. This, as you can see, we received twenty six responses out of the twenty eight people that live between Young Street and Hugo Avenue. And we asked them, I think it's five, six, seven questions. And how would they describe the speed of traveling on Fourth Street? And it'll, and the majority of them said, serious. The noise levels are also serious. And have you seen trucks using Fourth Street in either direction? And people have said often. Next. And do you feel the safety of your family is at risk because of speeding vehicles on our street? And twenty five of the twenty six said yes, and the only one that didn't was a new owner. So the people on the street are very, very concerned about the safety of their family, kids that might step out onto the road, people backing out of their driveways. Without that sightline, there's not enough stopping distance and they're very concerned. And also people are concerned about the traffic value because of the, the noise and the, and the volume of traffic. Next, please. So we asked the customers if the town in Midland should be addressing this issue and by and large, the majority said, yes, we'd like to see the town do something about this. And many, many felt that they would assist in the collection of speed or noise data if, 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 if more is requested. Next, please. So that brings us to the travel, traffic issues. And these are the three traffic issues that I've summarized. The first one is the traffic speed, which has been recorded by the town radar data collections. And it's recorded to be dangerously above the speed concerned safe for such a steep hill. And part of the problem is, is also a lot, a lot of noise by vehicles accelerating up that hill, trying to get up to that speed limit of forty or fifty or sixty. In such a short, short distance, it creates a lot of noise on that hill. Decibels are quite high. And C three, large trucks are using Fourth Street as a shortcut to access Vinden or avoid downtown despite the signage at both ends of Fourth. Next, please. So just to focus on the speed for a minute, traffic data collected on by equipment installed in both sides for limited. Periods have recorded drivers accelerating up Fourth Street, speeding up to seventy eight kilometers per hour. And in a posted forty kilometers zone. Although the site, again, the sightline is only eighty one meters. And the, the concern here is that the Traffic Association of Canada, they issued guy, issued guidelines. And this was, and the latest report out was two thousand eleven. And, and they recommend a sight distance of a hundred and sixty meters for urban roads to avoid a. For avoidance maneuver at fifty kilometers per hour. So that's really where I'm coming from on the, on this thing. The, the, the analysis found that majority sixty three percent of northbound drivers are speeding. So sixty three percent, over half them are speeding up to a max of seventy eight. And forty two of the southbound drivers are also speeding up to sixty five kilometers per hour. Next slide, please. The high decibel noise from loud mufflers on vehicles accelerating up the hill. This is caused by the, this is caused by the acceleration. A vehicle and also at the same time as that's happening, there's a lot of exhaust particles are released, which can, can lead to organ damage and premature death. Motorcycles, trucks and street racing type car, cars are exceeding the ninety decibel maximum in the town bylaw. Two thousand nine, one oh four. And residents have made complaints through the, the OPP. But the offending drivers are difficult to come, to, to document. I reported two drivers myself and were success, successful in getting the, those vehicles to tone down the noise. But there's so many and on a summer night, if you just sit up on the hill here and listen to the streets in Midland, all you hear is motorcycles and trucks. And fire engines and, and police cars. The noise in this town is, is really incredible. Next, please. So the, the third part of the traffic issue is large trucks using fourth despite the signage. Large trucks are turning off the truck route to use Fourth Street because of the reduced number of stop signs compared to other streets. The way you've laid out, the way the streets, stop signs have been laid out, it streamlines Fourth Street and all the truckers want to use it, even in spite of the signs we've put up. The no heavy truck signage on the south side of Young Street is only twenty meters from the turning intersection. It's impossible for a large multi-axle truck to move back into the designated truck route when they see the sign at the intersection. The sign also does not define maximum truck weights or the number of axles. So they don't really know where they fit in. I, I, I held my hand up and stopped one truck driver and asked him what he was doing on our street. He was a twenty four foot moving van and he said he's not a heavy truck. So that just goes to show you that we need more in the way of signage to let people know that they shouldn't be using it. Next sign, please. Or sorry, next slide, please. So the liability to failure to act due to failure to act, residents have done their part by calling the police many times. Because of noise, speeding and truck traffic, but little has changed. Enforcement is not the solution as drivers but now believe they are entitled to drive ten over the posted limit and are not aware of the hazard of sightline. The town set up Fourth Street as an urban collector, perhaps before the two thousand eleven publication of guidelines for stopping distances. However, the town is now aware of the ongoing danger of speeding with the limited sightline and could be held liable for any loss of life or property going forward. Next slide, please. So E one shows some of the solutions that we brought forward. That we would like to see done. They're kind of listed in the, in, in the order of priority. And the next slide lists some of the ones that were picked up on the survey. So the first one is, we'd like you to budget for a raised traffic table at the top of the hill to slow drivers in both directions. And this would, this would be a physical barrier to be speeding over that hill. It would stop them and make them have to slow down. And also to budget for better truck signage, advanced signs on poles and overheads on Young and Bay. Are needed to inform heavy truck drivers that they can't use Fourth Street unless making a delivery between Young and Bay. Review the number and location of stop signs between Fourth, First and Midland Avenue to balance the flow of traffic. We'd like to see the, the overall volume of traffic balanced between all of the routes. Across the town rather than everybody being streamlined to Fourth Street. Streamline the computer routes to commuter and truck routes using Highway ninety three, William and Vinden Street. Those, those routes are already listed as truck routes. We need to use them more for commuters as well.
Mr. Coke Steak, remind you that you have two minutes remaining, sir.
Thank you. The fourth one on this slide, remove the designation of Fourth Street as an urban collector because of the limitations in sightline and the insufficient stopping distance. Next. Next slide, please. And these are the remainder of the ones we picked up and for your consideration, larger speed limit signs, the raised table I mentioned. Improved locations for signage, which we need to give them for more advanced notice that they can't make that turn. Eight has been mentioned, et cetera, et cetera. Some of the unique things that were mentioned was a faux speed bump. In both directions on hills, what they, you paint on the road, something that looks like a speed bump. They use it a lot in other countries. They find it very effective. But I think people going to and from work are going to, going to remember that when they come home. And this is one that you probably should consider is a flashing red light. Approaching the Hugo intersection as you're going north down the hill. People down at that intersection have had four, three or four accidents recently with a car ending up on someone's front lawn and feel that. Flashing red light down there would really help people to know that there, there's a road to cross. And a median limiter to prevent large trucks from making the turn from Young Street. So there's a physical barrier to them making that turn. Next, please. Okay, now that's the, that's the bulk of my presentation. I've included some addendums. This is the, an excerpt from the. The, the Transportation Association of Canada showing, if you look under the first line, fifty kilometers per hour and under B, which is an urban roadway. The stopping distance is a hundred and sixty meters to be able to make that stop. Next addendum, please. So noise levels on Fourth Street Hill, many large trucks, motorcycles and street racing style cars are exceeding ninety decibels, way over ninety decibels. And this is the townwide problem and wider enforcement options, options need to be considered by the council. I don't think it's enough to be expected to report these people. Some of them. Some, they're just going too fast to be able to catch the license number. Next addendum, please. And here's some additional information. With vehicles accelerating up Fourth Street Hill, a vehicle in acceleration creates about ten times the amount of exhaust. That a vehicle at a constant speed produces. And these exhausts get blown down onto the houses of the residents that live here. And we know, now know in certain studies that have been done by MIT and in UK that many people are suffering. And have, have early death as a result of this kinds of pollution. These particles in the exhaust, they get caught up and they get trapped in your organs and. And many people are dying from that. Now, I think that's the end of my presentation. I had another addendum, but I moved it up. So if anybody has any questions.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Coke Steak. I'll. I'll allow counsel to any clarification or, Mr. Campbell, do you have anything to add?
As soon as I get my video on, I, I, I think, you know, a lot of the items that meant that. Were mentioned are, are included as options in our traffic calming policy that we'll be talking about next.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Coke Steak, if I could. I just for clarification. If I understand correctly, and I thank you so much for your presentation and please say hi to Ms. Downer for me. Really, the issue is the speed of cars. Am I hearing that correctly? The. Cars are driving too fast.
Everything else comes out of that.
Yes, that's, so the reason why I ask and I get it, you know, I sort of put everything, five percent, ninety five percent of people follow the rules. And the five percent of the people ruin it for everybody. And we reduce the speed limit to forty, but what I'm hearing, you're asking for signs and stuff, but the people aren't following the rules anyway. So I am, you know, that's my biggest concern. What? Maybe a speed bump might help, you know, to deter and slow down, but there are cars going and the five percent. You know, the, the majority of us like to follow my, you know, drive the forty kilometers. They don't need to accelerate up that hill because they're only going forty. And they don't, but it's the one, you know, the, the, the five percent of the people that are really ruining it for the rest of it. Is that what I'm hearing? Because we have another situation in town that people want us to reach. And I am concerned, we've reduced, we can reduce the speed all over town. It's the idea of people following the rules.
Mike, just want to make a comment in response to what you, you said there. Mike, uh, just want to make a comment, uh, in response to what you, you said there. Uh, the two things are, it's not just speed, it's acceleration and acceleration is what's causing all the noise and the pollution. Uh, but speed is what they attain when they get to the top of the hill. And we found that sixty-three percent of the northbound drivers are speeding, not five percent, ten percent. Sixty-three percent are speeding up to a maximum of sixty, uh, uh, maximum seventy-eight in a forty. And southbound forty-two percent are speeding to a maximum of sixty-five. They're not all doing sixty-five, but they're all doing fifty and in the low sixties. So we really need to find a, a solution. Speed bump is maybe not the word we use because speed bump might be too abrupt, might be too abrupt, it may be hard for snow removal. It wouldn't be permanent if it was, uh, a speed bump, it'd have to be removed for sm, snow removal in the winter. But a raised table, which is being used in other locations in town, is just a gentle reminder to people that they need to slow down. And that's why we make that suggestion.
Okay, thank you, sir. I, I, I used to live on the street myself, uh, two ninety-five, four street. So, um, many years ago, it didn't seem to be that big a problem, but I, I'm, we're hearing it all the time. So I, I appreciate you taking the time today to come and, uh, and address councils, never easy, but great presentation and, uh. We appreciate your time. I see Council Gordon, Council Gordon, you had a question for, uh, uh, clarification?
Yes, and Councilor Maine had his hand up as well. Um, Mr. Kope stake, thanks for, thanks for the presentation, fourth street's been an ongoing, um, you know, subject. For my whole term, there's lots of other streets that also have concerns, but, uh, fourth is definitely right up there at the top. So much so that you made the, uh, sort of the shortlist of the new draft policy that we're expected to, uh, vote on tonight. Um, I guess the sad news is, is that even with the revision, uh, that I was successfully able to lobby for, which is the inclusion of collectors. Fourth street still remains outside of the policy, even given all of the evidence and the complaints and whatnot. So just wondering if you had a chance to review the draft policy and give you an opportunity, uh, kind of a unique one, since you're the only person deputizing today. Some input on how you feel about, uh, fourth street being, you know, basically, uh, beyond the reach of this policy. As we're about to enact it probably.
Well, I think you're talking about it not qualifying because it's been classified as an urban collector. That's what I was aware of. And, um, and I think that that's, that's not going to solve the problem and you're still going to have that liability. You're still going to have people's lives being risked and people are going to be hurt and it's going to be accidents. And I think you need, that needs to be the basis, that needs to be the center of your attention. And, um. I'm not sure if your draft policy is going to help in any, in, in that regard, slowing those people down. But something needs to be done because it's, uh, it's a real mess up there and people are going to be hurt.
Follow up, Council Gordon?
Just a quick follow up question, Mr. Kope stake, are you aware of any, uh. Targeted enforcement initiatives where the police have, um, you know, made a project out of that street camping out and just taking a zero tolerance enforcement? Um, or has that happened at all in all these past few years?
Yes, it has. There's a number of us have, uh, have called the police about that. I've called them about noise and speeding. And the police do, uh, do park their vehicles and, uh, and stop traffic. Uh, but, uh, people don't really, um, it doesn't really make sense to people because they're all doing fifty. And the police aren't stopping them. So they're all exceeding what is safe. Uh, stopping distance, they're all, they're, they're exceeding the guidelines for safe stopping. At fifty and the police aren't stopping them. So it's, enforcement is not working at all. Uh, they aren't stopping the majority of people that are speeding over that hill. They're just trying to catch the ones that are going at dangerous reckless speed. Uh, I think, uh, a stronger statement needs to be made to people about speeding on that hill. Uh, because they, they really don't consider it, they're thinking about getting to work or getting home from work. They're really not thinking about the, the, what they're causing, uh, people's, the risks they're taking with people's lives in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kope stake, that was such an excellent present, presentation. If we had a road safety committee, we would definitely have you on it. Uh, that was excellent. Um, and I very much appreciate when it's coming from my neighbors. Uh, and not from me, I do live on the street that we were mentioning. And so I have personally seen many of these incidents, I have seen collisions. I have seen people in trucks and vehicles not be able to make it up the hill in snowy conditions. And I've even seen people slide into Young Street, uh, because they're carrying too much speed in conditions. Um, I have seen people being pulled over, but they, it's almost happenstance. If the police are coming out of the courthouse heading towards the jail and they just happen to catch the person, uh, speeding. And so, but really when it boils down to, as you mentioned, excessive speeds and trying to address that issue. Which we're having a problem all across town and the pandemic has really made it worse. And it's, it's just, it's beyond our ability, we're really struggling to, uh, solve that issue. But the truck traffic, for me, that seems like one of the achievable, uh, goals, uh, is to try to, uh, divert. Trucks onto the proper truck routes and so. Um, signage might be helpful, but as you mentioned before, even reaching out to individual businesses. I know Mr. Reichel has done that in the past, reaching out to individual businesses and asking them to remind, uh, truck drivers and delivery people. To try to take the proper routes. So maybe a little bit of awareness on our end on truck traffic and goods movement. Might be very helpful for that one particular issue. Uh, so I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just another comment to that is, I, I myself have, uh. Sent emails to three corporate hot, head offices of, of transport companies using the street. And it's been effective. I haven't seen those trucks on our street again since.
Thank you, that's good news. Uh, Council Ocheski?
Yeah, thank you very much. I just want to take a second to voice my support. Uh, I really don't know what the solution is here and, uh, I can refer to people much smarter than me on this topic. But, uh, I do acknowledge there's an issue here, uh, we're definitely seeing it, uh, in the presentation when you said, um. Why do we streamline down fourth street? And I, it hit me and I thought, why don't we just take all the stop signs off fifth street? And it'll, but then crossing Hugo would be quite the trick, wouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I thought, you know, that what a simple solution, but, uh, it's, it's not simple and. I do defer to people smarter than me for, uh, the, the solution, but when it comes, I, I will support it. I, the same thing for the point road, I think, uh. Is not a simple solution and, uh, but I, I will support it when the time comes.
I think, uh, sorry, I just wanted to follow up on something you said there. I think we need to, uh, consider, uh, there, there are a lot of commuters in town and they need to get across town. They need to get up to the, the super jail or the hospital or wherever they're going and they need to get home again. And we did give some thought to giving them some kind of a commuter route. Uh, something that's, like you said, maybe there's a lot less, uh, stop signs on that route. And that route would not have an, have a large hill in the middle of it. With, uh, with issues of sight line and stopping a distance. Maybe pick a, some kind of a route around the downtown, around the neigh, around the neigh, uh, the residential neighborhoods. And, uh, and give that to commuters and direct them that way.
And you have, you may, I just point out that when you look at the diagram for arterials, collectors and residential. Um, most of the complaints that we're hearing are coming from people who live on collectors. With respect to providing routes to get to, um, the super jail, et cetera. Um, we have arterials, uh, one of which is William Street. So anybody coming from the west who needs to get there can come down William onto Bay Shore round. So on. But the problem, the problem that you're describing does not just exist between Hugo and, uh, and Young. I, I, I use that route, I've seen, I don't, I don't live there, so I don't see as much of it as you do, but I have seen the sorts of things you're describing. But there are routes for people to get to particularly the, um, you know, there's Vinden Street, you could go on through to Thompson Road, which is straight. You know, once, once you clear the, uh, commercial district, you could go on up to Thompson Road and then across to the, the facilities that I mentioned. Those routes exist, but it's, the people are deciding to use collectors which are designed to move people. Uh, through town. Victoria Street to Eighth Victoria Street, and that's a, that's a particular one where people are, uh, use, uh, coming through when they are, they were going, uh, from. Uh, Harborview, uh, and Sunnyside Road, and up and trying to access, uh, points south of Midland so they can down to Young Street, Young Street. Uh, despite the fact that there are, there are these other alternative routes and so. I like Councilor Shesky, I'm a little flummoxed as to how you're going to deal with people who intentionally speak. And I do know a couple of people on one street that, uh, we're getting a lot of complaints from, who do intentionally speak. You're doing ninety kilometers, not when you're fifty kilometers on deliberately, they don't care. And I don't know how you deal with those people. Enforcement is really, until we can get fines from the province. Where you're, for example, it's going to cost you a thousand dollars for, two thousand dollars for doing that very act in six months without a license or perhaps jail time. These folks don't care. And those are the folks that unfortunately is, as the deputy mayor has said, are making it extremely difficult for you. I appreciate the, the, uh, the recommendations. I, I personally think that you just take trucks right off horse street. From, from, uh, Young Street right down to say, uh, Bay. And they, they just don't, and I'm allowed in there, uh, other than as you say for deliveries and they better have a manifest that say they're going to a particular address. Now you're into enforcement. Um, but it's, it's, it's a multivariate, uh, problem, as you've pointed out. Uh, some of these things are not necessary, there are, there may be related, but they're, they, you, you're going to have to deal with them slightly differently. I, I, there's a, there's a silver Honda out here by Town Hall. And he's got a high noise muffler on there and I've been sitting here with Inspector Evans and he would give his eye teeth to get that guy. But it's just that, he's just that short distance and bang, he's off the street and it takes basically. Uh, uh, a device that you put on the, you know, to, to measure this stuff, of course, he doesn't have one in his cruiser and he's big enough that he barely gets in the cruiser, never mind carrying that stuff around. So it's, for him, it's just, it's big, uh, uh. What's the frame is just maddening, he's, he's ready to pull his hair out and, and, but it's, uh. He's, anyway, I'll leave it at that, but I appreciate your, you taking the time to make the presentation, but it is. If I take traffic off of, of, um. We're getting complaints from truck traffic, uh, for truck traffic on first street, for example, that's been going on for a long time too. We, we take truck traffic off fourth, it's going to move over to first or it's going to move over to. You likely Middle Avenue because King Street now with all the stoplights, it said that it was designed to slow everybody down. So, uh, I think you'll find that the policy that's coming forward has these different remedies in it. And it sets a framework within which you can then reference the treatments that you're going to make to solve particular problems. With those options that are in the, the policy and I'm hoping council will pass that tonight. And staff can work from that and start doing, uh, uh, the exception processing. And through that, understand that if I have a number of different exceptions like, uh, you are describing on. Fourth between Young and Hugo, that then we can adapt the policy to, to suit, suit the problem. So, but again, thank you for your presentation. And I too, uh, I just don't know, it's Councilor Shep, she said, how you deal with this, this aggression that seems to have built up in, in the community. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Kope stake? I don't see any. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. And, uh, hopefully, uh. We can pass this later tonight and we can start, uh, addressing some of the issues. But thank you so much for coming and I wish you and your family a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. It's not too far off, but, uh, thank you very much, sir. Thank you, everyone. Good, great discussion, great deputation. Uh, next up on the agenda, we have a couple of items that were withdrawn. First, uh, is CSR dash two thousand twenty-one dash seventy. Which is the revised traffic calming policy and guide. That staff report CSR dash two thousand twenty-one dash seven, seventy. Revised traffic calming policy and guide dated November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one be received. And that council adopt the revised traffic calming policy and guide and direct, direct staff to implement the policy. I need mover in a second with this item. Moved by Council Maine, second by Mayor Strathern. Mr. Campbell, you want to start the conversation off?
Uh, thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor. Uh, this, uh, the draft originally came to earlier this year and part of our discussion was let's have some public consultations. See what the, uh, any input, uh, and changes we could make to this policy. So we had that public meeting, uh, we've made some changes, uh, and turned over to Mitch Sobol, he was a project lead on this. Uh, he can, uh, you know, answer any questions, uh, but really this policy is in front of you today to, uh. Put some guidance, uh, for, for staff and for, for council. Today, we, this policy first came to council, I believe in two thousand sixteen. So it's been five years of, uh, you know, trying to get to where it is today and it was that we were working constantly on it. It just always seemed to get on the back burner. It is an important issue. Uh, we're trying to deal with enforcement, we're trying to deal with the psychology of drivers. Because this isn't, uh, in most cases, it's how do we change the behavior of the driver? And, uh, all of us are drivers and, uh, we know what motivates each of us to follow the rules or not. And, uh, we've just heard from a resident on fourth street where the town has done a lot of traffic calming. The most traffic calming in the town has been done on fourth street. And they still have challenges and they still have complaints. So this is, uh, an issue that, uh, unless a police officer is sitting. Exactly where somebody wants them to sit to catch speeders every day or, uh, you know, uh, which we can't afford. We can't get there. So, uh, this policy has a lot of options that can be taken into account. And the real challenge is. How easy is it to pass the bar versus move cars around the town? Uh, and staff, we've tried to find a, a balance in the scorecard. We reduced the scoring from our previous. Uh, uh, iteration, we included collector roads which wasn't in there before, so we made that, that change to bring that into the fray. Um, but again, I, I would say, uh, if. It was so easy to pass that every single street got traffic calming, we might as well pass a townwide forty kilometer speed limit. Which we already know, people on fourth street don't follow, uh, our data collected in our school, uh, zones that are forty. People don't follow forty in the school zones. So, you know, I, I don't, I, I think it's trying to find a policy where. Uh, we have some guidelines and where there's a real traffic volume need. And that's our biggest challenge, we just don't really have the traffic volume. Uh, but some of the, the measures that we could take, even, you know, painting more lines on roads, we just painted a, a crosswalk in pretty colors. Which was over, you know, ten thousand dollars, that has to be done all the time. So we, we can do many things, but we're. How do we really get that driver to change what they do? And that's, uh, that's our biggest challenge and people don't obey signs and speed limits today. They're not going to obey speeds and sign limits tomorrow. So we've got some ideas in this policy. It's got some good aspects to it and if council passes it, uh, then we'll start to, you know, go through and the suggestions. Uh, where, where people wish us to look and part of that includes more public engagement on each of those streets. Uh, and because some streets are very localized, some streets are collectors now. And, you know, the people might not want the car in front of their house, but it's, uh, five streets over that have to use their street. But we'll be interviewing them too. So when we look at a majority rule, in some cases, that, that will be a challenge. If, when we look at scoring, but again, it's all users of the street that we would, that our policy would look at, uh, considering and, and. Talking to as we move forward. So, um. I guess the last thing in this, in this report, there's some comments about some proposed, uh, budget allocations that you'll be seeing in the two thousand twenty-two draft budget. So today we have five thousand dollars in, in our, our traffic calming budget that we, we spend. Uh, we're proposing over, uh, uh, almost seventy thousand dollars in next year's budget. And, but that's not for debate tonight, that's for something to debate when, when you see the budget, whether you want to, to do that. So. With that, I, you know, I'll turn it over really to you for your questions and comments. And if you have some guidance, uh, you know, if you want further revisions to this. Now that's your, your prerogative to request staff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Sobol, you care to add anything before we move over to council?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, no, Andy pretty well hit everything on the head. Um, happy to answer any questions you have for the policy or, or the intentions.
Thank you. I appreciate you both being here this evening. I have Council Gordon and I'll go to Council Cunningham. Council Gordon?
Thank you very much. Uh, guys, you did a great job on this policy that I know it's been a long, long time coming. And there's been lots of iterations. I know we, we sent you back the drawing board collectively and then you went, you know, with the public input, you did some more changes. I'm very happy to see the collectors are now part of this because we have so many of them that are heavily lived on in our municipality. Uh, and I understand also the challenges of trying to find that scoring where, you know, you can't make everything qualify. I get it, there's not enough money either. Oh, there was one, uh, option that I discussed with, uh, specifically with the residents on. Middle and Point Road and I'm sure most of us have received the same correspondence that I got. And to me, it's a pretty, uh, it puts the onus, well, yeah, where it belongs on, on the enforcement side. If you want to make the bite from, uh, getting pulled over for speeding hurt a little more in your wallet, then you. A little more in your wallet, then you raise the impact of that speeding ticket. And that's a pretty cheap uh implementation for us. It's some cheap signage, metal signs, and we declare those sections of the road, not the entire roadway, but sections. As community safety zones. And we can do that with or without this policy. It's something the municipalities have the power to do. And I think the, uh, and I'm gonna be suggesting, I don't know how we do this tonight, but. Even though Middle and Point Road fails to qualify uh with the scoring system. My suggestion to council and I'm hoping that, uh, I don't know if to do this as a motion or what, but. That we consider uh making us the heavily resided section of Middle and Point Road where the the. Complaints are coming from and the petitions arose, we make that a community safety zone. Is that gonna cause people to automatically slow down? No, it's not. There's no, no one has a fantasy about that. But what it does do is when the police camp there and they pull you over. That fine becomes staggeringly more expensive. And that is something, that's a lesson that people remember. When they have to write that check or go to court. So I'm suggesting that we collectively make. You know, more use of the community safety zone. It's a. Quite an inexpensive thing for us to do. Uh, and it really hits people where it does matter. And to the mayor's point, everyone else who said that people don't obey the signs right now, fair enough. So let's make it really count. So what what I'd like to see tonight. If I got the support from council was to. Let's try this experiment out and satisfies some of the earliest people who came to us with a petition. That we asked to, you know, hold off while we were bringing this, um, you know, this policy to life and they've been very patient. And they were saddened by their exclusion and now they're, you know, semi happy by their inclusion, but still excluded. I think this is an easy compromise that's gonna help uh the residents on that street and potentially keep kids and everyone else safe as people realize that the fines are increasingly definitely because it's community safety zone. So those are my initial comments. Other than that, I checked with uh Mr. Mr. Um, you know, the Chair of our accessible or sorry, uh. By the Committee for uh. Walkability and everything. I'm having a brain gap. You know what I'm talking about here? The Transportation Committee.
Uh, active transportation.
The one, yeah, yeah, you know, walk and bike and uh they're always quick to chime in on these things. And I know we've got some communications. From Herb and uh, you know, some critique. But I reached out to him after we got those and his overall impression is that, no, please support this policy as it's written. It's a work in progress, a living document. We can revisit it. There's nothing in here that's a showstopper. It's all a perfect base to start from. Uh, so I I intend to support this thing with or without council's support of uh community safety zone, but I'd really like to see us implement that. Or at least, you know, get a staff report on implementing it. Uh, and let's get this thing going and and start acting on it. Thank you.
Mr. Sobol, care to comment on with regards to a community safety zone and how those would work in the town of Midland? I am a little hesitant only because. We do one neighborhood and uh, next thing you know, we might as well, as Mr. Campbell said earlier, that uh. Might as well make the whole town uh community safety zone, which may not be a bad idea as we move forward, but the. I just, I am concerned picking and choosing, but if you maybe you could share some of the uh information with us, that'd be wonderful.
Sure. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and to you too, Counselor Gordon. Um, yeah, community safety zones are something that the council of the municipality has the power to do through the Highway Traffic Act. Um, you have to pass a bylaw and install signage and things like that. And so it's it's a, it's a method. It's a traffic calming measure. It is included in the, one of the passive measures through the guideline. Um, but you know, like Counselor Gordon mentioned, he doesn't, council has the authority to do it at any time they wish. It is um. It's a method that doesn't have a traditional warrant system like a lot of the regulatory side. It is a regulatory sign, but doesn't have a warrant system. It has a few guidelines that go along with it. Guidelines normally have, um, you know, they they recommend installation in school zones and long-term care centers, churches, parks, playgrounds, things like that. So, and we currently have four of these in town. All four of them are in posted school zones. Three out of those four school zones have um flashing lights to reduce the speeds at a certain time of day. So to implement it in this location, it would be a bit of an oddball from that sense um to what we have installed. With the rest of town and you have to, you have to consider the fact of if you install them everywhere, is it going to work, right? And as Counselor Gordon alluded to, uh, enforcement's a huge part of it. If you don't have the enforcement to go along with the community safety zone signage, you have no bite to the bark, right? So, um, it, you know, it's it's a method, but there has to be a few other things that come along with it.
Thank you, Mr. Sobol. It's actually, uh, I appreciate the answer. Uh. And that makes gives me a lot more to think about. Appreciate that. Uh, Counselor Cunningham.
Yes, thank you. You're going to gather that a lot of us have been talking about this in between meetings as we try to figure out how do we support. Uh, residents in some of our trickier, stickier spots. And Counselor Osheski and I were actually chatting same alongside. You'd think that we were singing the same song sheet with Counselor Gordon about perhaps the. Uh, safety zone would be an option for these. Exceptional locations and. Over in Ward Three, we have several spots where children are getting on buses, walking to school. Along collector roads with no sidewalks. That are really quite skinny and I'm not even referring to Everton Road. I think we're lucky on Everton in the number of stop signs we have. Whereas Victoria Street and um Harborview. As well as Midland Point Road all have young children going to school. With skinny shoulders and not the kids with skinny shoulders. They might be buff, but this, the roads have skinny shoulders. And if there is a way to make those spots safer, anything that we can do, because the solution is sidewalks. The solution is not in our budget. So what we could do with the safe, community safety zone. In those scariest of spots, and I know we've got that Fuller to Harborview is going to be re-engineered. I would love to know when. I'm not sure how how the pandemic and other delays have affected that. But in the meantime, it continues to be. An unsafe place to stand to catch the bus or to walk along the road to join others to catch a bus. So I, I was also approaching with a notice of motion this evening to look at community safety zones in a couple of spots and. And have staff look at that for us and say, where could these be most effective and come back with some suggestions on that? Um, so really just uh sing along with that. But the other thing that I wanted to thank you for in this report is the discussion of software that would. Give us the data that we need to have some targeted approaches to enforcement, because that is something that. We aren't going to be able to afford getting the patrols out. We aren't going to be able to afford just having somebody sitting in a a cruiser at all of these spots. So. Uh, I I have a. A little bit of a hearsay impact of what that software could do for us. And I'd like to hear a little bit more from the horse's mouth, as it were. About how that data could be collected and what impact that could have. Over the next couple of years to help us tackle some of the individual driver issues that we do have in the area. I know my neighbor has recommended that he would roll out the strip of nails. When the guy, he knows who's speeding, the one guy, the loud noise and the speeder on this road. And he'll come out and yell at him, but he says, if you want to give him a strip of nails to roll out, he could do that, too. So a lot of the most challenging people. We know who they are. We've recognized their car as as Mr. Mayor was commenting on. It's just having that timing and I'm wondering if. The software could be um a key to gathering the data to do that.
Mr. Sobol?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, three to Counselor Cunningham. Uh, yeah, the software is is, it's really quite powerful. I'll give you the Coles Notes version of what it's capable of doing. Essentially, it works off of, you know. Big data. It's working off of cell phones and GPS systems and, you know, OnStar and vehicles, things like that. So it's collecting all this data all the time, regardless if. Somebody wants it to or not. It's not an app that we install on our phone and or anything like that. Basically. What it allows us to do is to set up, uh, they call them zones. So we can set up, uh, you know, a street Everton or Midland Point Road or something like that could be a zone from. From Fuller to Porter's Park Lane and it's gonna collect the data of every, every data point that comes through there. It's going to do the speed of it. Um, it can even get to the level of what is the mode of transportation. Are they on a bus? Are they on a bike? Are they walking? Like we can, it can get to that level. That. Is a little more expensive option to get that level. That's not what we're proposing through our budget. We're proposing the middle of the road one. The middle of the road one will allow us to. To get like the this data breakdown to see when is the time of day of the speeders are occurring and we could, so we could possibly. To your point, you know, target enforcement a little better to say between maybe the hours of eight AM and ten AM, the morning rush that speeding tends to be a little higher in these locations. And we can. Target OPP, you know, possibly to those. Um, the data is uh the, probably the biggest thing for staff's benefit. Is it allows us to do our analysis much faster. Right now, the radar trailers and the radar signs are are excellent. Um, they gather good, accurate data, but we need the time for that to be deployed out there, collecting the data. The street light data program will allow us to go back in time. There's about a one-month lag typically from when the data is available. So it's November seventeenth today. Theoretically, I should be able to go. October seventeenth, right through January one of two thousand twenty-one and collect data over that long period of time. So typically, as you go to a larger sample size, you get more accurate results. So that's one of the advantages. When we get a complaint, we have get a successful petition in for traffic calming and things like that. We'll be able to analyze things much more quicker. We can always do a sanity check with our radar signs and make sure that the data is still accurate and we have the ability through this software to um. To make sure it's accurate. We can modify it based off of known volumes in town. Um, but. Um, essentially it allows us to do our job much more accurate, cover more ground. We can still hit the requested areas with the radar signs through town. Um, but this will allow us to do everything else much quicker.
Counselor Chesky?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it was a great report. I uh, it was a long and winding report, but I learned a lot about uh. You know, speed reduction measures and uh, I'm not sure if the, you know, jump at the top of fourth is the answer, but. Uh, that's why we have all these options. So it's great. Um, so I do think personally I'll echo Counselor Cunningham and Counselor Gordon that uh, Middle Point Road is a bit of a. Unique situation and and we have heard loud and clear from the residents and uh, we've got so many emails in the last little while that uh, I haven't actually responded to all of them. So. Uh, there's definitely a cry for help there and I drive it twice a day. So I'm quite familiar with the street. Uh, sometimes when I go to work at six thirty in the morning, it's pitch black. And there's people walking their dog and they're covered in. Bright fluorescent stuff and blinking lights and they like, it's the point they look robotic almost, but. Uh, it's due to a fear and and there's certainly uh some speeders in the morning and then at three thirty, when I'm on my way back. I follow the school bus and they drop the kids off uh at multiple stops before I get to my house. So I get to see the kids get dropped off and. Uh, a lot of them haven't learned proper street etiquette yet and sometimes the parents aren't. Uh, they're quite yet and uh, you know, as a new parent, sometimes I want to get out of my car and direct traffic myself. So I do think community safety uh, a zone would kind of appease the um, the complaints that we've had and I think that. It's a, I don't want to call it a cheap fix, but it is um, it is just that. The sidewalks are definitely the solution and uh. I pray for a day with sidewalks on Midland Point Road, but that's another conversation altogether. Uh, probably not for this budget year, but we'll talk. And uh, so I I do support the community safety thing. I I think this traffic calming uh study was great. Uh, I love the document. So thank you very much for the time and effort that went into it. Thank you.
Very much, Counselor Chesky. Counselor Post?
Um, I definitely support the community safety uh zones and. Try to do what we can because if we can't just ignore it, I think it's our obligation. To do anything in our power and I know we can't, we don't have the 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 money to do everything the way we want to. But if we don't do everything that we can, we're not doing our anything for our residents and that's what our job is. As not just as counselors, but as the town. I think we need to provide anything we can to provide some some sense of safety, even if it's not. Real safety. It's if it's the best we can do and move forward, um, I'm content with that. I definitely support it.
Thank you, Counselor Post. Counselor Downer and then I have Counselor Maine.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. I too support the safety community zones up. And the sooner the better. Uh, we we've been very fortunate. Nobody's been hurt on that road. And I would like to see this happen sooner than later. So. I'm in support of it and also uh, the report was very well done. A lot of work went into it and uh, it was a big read. But it was very well done and thank you to the staff for presenting it.
Thank you, Counselor Downer. Counselor Maine?
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, yeah, absolutely. Uh, fully support this. It's been many years in the, in the working. I remember putting this motion forward last term. Working with uh, Mr. Galloway and it's. And rightfully so, that last draft was scrapped and it was modernized and. The new, this new version was brought forward and and as people have said, uh, it's a living document, so let's enact it as is. And then we'll continue to refine it and tweak it. Uh, we're already gonna start, we're already looking at the the matrix and the scores and that things and. And you know, uh, maybe you increase the weight of uh collisions, for example, that's already in there. Uh, you refer to uh vulnerable road users. That's the new term for pedestrian cyclist seniors. And that's really what it's all about. The traffic calming is to try to protect vulnerable road users. Uh, because cars have gotten safer for the drivers, new features, airbags, sensors, whatever. But nothing has made pedestrians safer. Um, and in fact, actually cars are less safe for pedestrians. Cars are larger, bigger, bulkier, more SUV. Uh, low sedans used to kind of take people out of the knees. Larger vehicles actually uh cause greater neck. And back injuries if they hit a pedestrian. So cars are actually more dangerous than ever. They can accelerate faster, you know. So anyways, that's the car thing and that's why we're doing this. Um. It in the policy, it talks about forty and there's a kind of some language around not necessarily supportive, always just dropping down to forty as a. As a message, the solution. And I would love to hear staff's thoughts on that because many municipalities are dropping to forty in many areas and some areas are even dropping down to thirty. Uh, so you already can think of areas in your head where it makes most sense to have lower speeds near schools, which we already do, uh, near seniors, uh, even in the downtown. Um, and a lot of places are enacting vision zero uh policies, which kind of take this traffic calming to the next level. And it also ties in with complete streets uh policies. And that's something that we have in the official plan that's kind of directing us. And I think. I know we just finished a policy and we're kind of moving in the direction that that's probably the next policy that we're gonna develop is a complete street policy. Um, to incorporate all these new um principles and philosophies. Um. To the notion of uh Midland Avenue and Victoria Street. Although it may not necessarily be warranted for traffic calming. It perfectly is warranted for sidewalks and pathways. And so it goes back to the multimodal transportation plan, which flagged Midland Point as a i- ideal corridor to look at. Paves, shoulders, uh, bike lanes, or even a pathway on one side, and that would help alleviate a lot of the concerns. If you can't slow the cars down. Uh, then you have to separate the cars and the pedestrians as much as you can, delineate them, separate them with barriers or and whatnot. Um. The other concept I wanted to talk about quickly is um cognitive, or it's also called ocular load. And it's the concept that if you drive on a four hundred uh, four hundred highway, everything's pulled out of the way and you can see for miles. And you you could just drive straight and you can go as fast as you can. In other areas, what we want to do is, I think it's called edge friction. You want to add as much as you can into the road right of way. And it creates a, it kind of puts pressure on the driver to have to recognize all the different things, parked cars, trees, there's kids. So when you drive downtown Midland, you drive a lot slower because there's more things to slow down. And so that's why the passive calming stuff is so important. To put street trees, uh, to have uh parked cars, uh, signs, pollards, uh, that type of thing. And I think that's gonna be effective. So um. I was very excited to hear that we're gonna talk about seventy thousand dollar in the budget for traffic calming. Because to me, I I know everyone looks at signage. That's easy. Obviously, the first step to isn't install signage. But really, the number one predominant predetermined of speed is the lane width. And we have big wide roads, uh, because we've got lots of snow. We've got big trucks and things like that and. Most effective way of slowing cars down has been is to narrow roads. And so you see in the policy, uh, neck downs, uh, chokers, that type of thing. And but that is comes at a higher cost. So. We definitely are gonna have to budget for the physical uh improvements to our roadways. And so I'm very supportive of those uh initiatives that are in the policy. And I'd very much love to see us uh, you know, skip the low-cost stuff and go right to the high costs, but super effective solutions. Um, for some of the areas in town. So, uh, yeah, thank you for allowing me to provide comments. And if I could just have staff comment on the the notion around forty or even thirty that other municipalities are looking at. Thank you.
Mr. Sobol?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, three to Counselor Maine. Yeah, the forties is, um, you know, we kind of touched on it earlier. It's it's one of those things that. Um, it's the psychology behind it. And if you make forties everywhere, as if there's no enforcement, you know, is it effective? One of the key things for us, as far as an indicator, we have a few forty zones in town, one of them being Four Street and another few of them being the flashed. Forties during certain times of the. Four Street and another few of them being the flashed forties during certain times of the day during in the school zones. As we've analyzed the data in those school zones. We're finding that those forty kilometers flashers have little to no effect. The speeds are not changing. The, you know, eighty fifth percentile speed is the, you know, the typical industry. Number you look at for how effective or what is the speed of traffic? In those locations, the eighty fifth percentile speed, those are the highest speeds over the posted limit that we've seen. All throughout town is at those forty zones and it just is just about identical to the eighty fifth percentile speed when it's a fifty zone. So. They don't necessarily work. I think what you're alluding to is the narrowing the lanes, having more features to distract drivers, things like that. Those features have more of an impact on traffic calming. However, those are the expensive ones, you know, King Street, for example. In the new redesign, it has a wider than normal lane to handle snow storage. But there's so much going on down there. That I personally don't feel comfortable driving anywhere near the speed limit down there. So that's, that's a good example of there's a lot going on. It's still a wide lane. And you feel like you have to drive slower. We have the necked intersections, all things like that. So I think those kind of features are the ones that. Are going to work in certain situations, but every situation is different. And we need to look at how we implement that. Definitely. It's something that we consider through any of our reconstructions. We try to make sure we're promoting traffic calming throughout those projects. And it's hard through some of the reconstructions, you have to adapt to existing conditions and things like that. New builds are a bit of a different story, greenfield construction, but. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much what I have to say on that unless you have any follow ups.
All of Counsel Maine.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much, Mitch, Mr. Sobel. I greatly appreciate that. I just saw something in passing from the city of Mississauga. They're rolling out a bunch of community safety zones. They're dropping some areas down to forty. Mississauga is probably the best example of suburban development in Ontario. It's entirely suburban. But they also, interestingly enough, they're installing the little mini speed cameras. They're just these little boxes, but they must come at a very high cost. I was just curious about that solution. If that's a something that people have been considered. I know commonly they're found at red light cameras. But there apparently there are also. Speed cameras for residential or collector areas. Is that something that has been considered or is that a very cost expensive solution? Thank you.
Counsel Maine, is that for our radar you're referring to? Because I did have a question with regards.
Sure, yeah, I think it's referred to that. Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Sobel. Any talk of four hour radar? I know in the city of Toronto, they've implemented four hour radar and. Everything I had pleasure being in North Bay last night and did a bit of research and during that period since they've implemented in two thousand twenty. They've reduced speeding by almost seventeen percent. And the speeds have definitely been reduced from an average of eighteen over to six kilometers over. So is that something we could consider at this point?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I see Andy's got his mic off. He would like to jump in on this one, I think.
Yes, the provincial government gave municipalities the authority to use red light cameras. Have to do some more research around just photo radar, not at intersections to see if that was part of the legislation. And some municipalities in Simcoe County have already looked at this. They are effective, but they're very expensive. So to put in one camera at an intersection, you're, you're looking at thirty thousand dollars. Initially and up to a hundred thousand dollars a year. I'm not sure we have the traffic where we'd collect enough tickets. To offset the cost, but that would be part of an evaluation if council wishes us to look at that. Because, you know, really, the, it, yeah, I think, you know, you might, in Toronto, they're running a hundred thousand dollars in intersection for the, for these cameras. And enforcement because it's a third party that has to review all the data, prepare the ticket, the summons. And make sure they're following all the legal practices to make sure it's a valid ticket. So that, that. Service cost on top of just the cost of the camera is what makes that very expensive. And if you have enough traffic. You, you can, it can be cost neutral, but you know, that's something we'd have to look at here if council wishes.
Thank you very much. It may be something to look into police services board and maybe even share with the other four municipalities. So. Thanks, Counsel Maine, for bringing that up. Mayor Strathern.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. One of the municipalities in the southern tier, Simcoe. Did a study on cost to implement photo radar and particularly they were looking at portable units because. Learn where these things are. So they wanted to move it around. Cost to implement was a quarter of a million dollars. And that included back office processing, which had to go through a consortium, which is based out of Toronto. So there's an initiation fee. So we have to join the club, so to speak, and they. Process all your information. So they declined that at that point. It was just as Campbell. Traffic just didn't warrant it. You were better to go with putting a. Police officer out there with a radar gun.
We can spend our money a little better. That is what we're hearing.
Well, for example, the spotlight software, it's not too dissimilar to what could be, has been used for tracking. Terrorists, which is you down to the IMEI number, which identifies the phone. So it's got certainly got its utility and it's broad, broad area, just the cost to you is just defined by the granularity of the data you want to collect. And the areas that you want to cover. But. Point out that the, some numbers that were provided by the OPP just recently. Between October eighth and October eleventh, they did a speed blitz in this detachment area. They ticketed, they had fifteen hundred and eighty one tickets, doesn't include warnings. Of that, there were twelve hundred and twenty, which were speeding and thirty three, which were stunt racing, driving. That was in four days. So you're looking at about shy of four hundred charges a day within the detachment zone. So you stop and think about the effort. It's only four days. If you started to just expand that. It's really difficult, I think, to. Expect that you're going to have really concentrated enforcement. Unless you can direct it in the streetlight software seems to be one of those things that allow you to do that on a. Municipal wide basis, particularly those areas that are. That are. Known to cause problem in my road, four street, Victoria seems to be have some of its problems, eight street. So I hope the council will support that when it comes up in the budget. Or at least have a serious discussion about. Another thing I just want to point out to contrary to what Counsel Maine is saying, I have a new car, relatively new, it's twenty nineteen. And it has lidar and radar and acoustic sensors. And I have to say that on more one occasion, it's probably saved a pedestrian in the parking lot, a lot of grief and me. When the warning comes on and just tells me that there's somebody outside of my field of vision. And so then I. Pay particular attention. Likewise, I was thinking about something coming into work too long ago. And suddenly my car just hang stopped and it was the sensors in the car that had detected. That somebody had stopped quickly to avoid a pedestrian who was running across the road, kid actually. And so again, that saved me a lot of grief. So I think actually cars are becoming safer. I know they're, you know, the big SUVs and so on, but. Safety systems are in there are now now being designed also for pedestrians. To to save me, be fun insurance and just the guilty guilty mind of knowing that I might have hit somebody, but also. For the individual who's jaywalking or running across the street and so on. And I also, like the rest of council, want to thank staff. For the amount of effort that's gone into this. It's a starting point is, I think, was Mr. Band and Dool said, one of his emails. And it gives you a point of reference. That you can then start to build more effective policy as you start to see things that are happening. I, I heard Counsel Cunningham correctly, she's going to be asking for, putting a motion forward around community safety zones, or at least having a good look at them. So I think that that's, you know, said it's in the policy. So now we've got a policy we're implementing. I do hope though that we don't get into. Putting them everywhere because familiarity breeds contempt and this business about forty. I get the read, a lot of places are putting forty in because of the types of injuries that Counsel Maine described. More than anything and it's, I don't think it's necessarily that. And they're putting enforcement efforts into these particular zones. These are typically larger centers that have the wherewithal to do that. You know, Mississauga. Hazel County did a great job of making sure that they've got more money in the bank than the US government has, I think. So Hazel was very effective at doing that. And so they've got the resources. Maybe, maybe Mississauga will give us a loan and we can do some of this stuff. But anyway, thank you very, thank you very much to staff for this and looking forward to seeing how we can improve it as we go forward.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. So we'll go ahead and vote on this motion and I understand Counsel Cunningham, you will be bringing or. Motion later on. So I'll ask, I'll refer to you at that time. Last comment, Counsel Maine.
Thank you. No, just a quick question. One of the most effective or some places I've tried very effectively is using paint. New York City, Janet Sidet Khan, who was a guest keynote speaker at one of the Good Roads conferences a couple of years ago. We even give Midland a shout out for our awesome King Street design. They were just using paint and ballers and re-stripping and changing ground intersections very effectively without. And then they would come in with the concrete later, once they proven that the new configuration worked. And so the question for staff would be, if we were to looking at increasing line painting at around intersections. Reducing turning radiuses or neck downs or that type of thing. Would that come out of the seventy thousand traffic calming budget? Or is that something where we should be looking at improving, increasing the line painting budget to include? Some new things that we're looking at in this traffic calming policy.
Mr. Campbell.
Sure, that must be the, you'd have to include it in the operating budget because those lines need to be painted annually. And, you know, we already have, you know, our budgets in the, you know, seventy, eighty thousand dollar range a year already for for line, line painting. So yes, we can. You know, change our, some of the painting at intersections and stop lines. If council wishes to have more, it's really a budget discussion because, as I said, the more durable paints. Intersections or colorful paints are very expensive and they add up quickly. So. As I always say, we can, it's just money, we can do anything. It's just got to give me the budget.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. That's where, that's where we all know that we can do anything. It's just how do we pay for it? So thank you so much for the answers and great conversation, great report. And we've heard the motion moved by Counsel Maine, second by Counsel Strathern. All those in favor? I see that's carried. Thank you very much. Next up, we have the next motion. It is CRS two thousand twenty one dash seventy seven. Midland two thousand twenty one, finding our way, update report. Back two thousand twenty one, that staff report CSR two thousand twenty one dash seventy seven entitled Midland two thousand twenty one, finding our way. Report, update report back dated November seventeenth, two thousand twenty one be received and. The chief administration officer be directed to report on the progress of changes made during the next year, no later than the Q four of two thousand and twenty two. I need a mover in a second. Yours is motion. Moved by Counsel Ochuski, second by, I need a seconder. Johnny Maine, Counsel Maine, thank you. Mr. CEO, would you care to provide an update?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
You sure can. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to give you a bit of an update on on this report. I think the report. Obviously speaks for itself in terms of the details, but I did, I did want to reflect on on a few things that. I think are certainly encouraging and something that I think we should all be proud and grateful for. I was, I was reflecting, I take a lot of inspiration from people who do things and. And I've been in operations my entire career and I really like working with people who actually get out there and get their hands dirty. And and one of those people that I took some inspiration from recently was Mary Jane Howlett. If you know Mary Jane, she's, she's responsible really for all those beautiful displays you see around the town. And I took the opportunity to to offer my services to Mary Jane when she was planting once and she said. That's, I appreciate the offer, Dave, but you know, that's the fun part. Fun parts planting all those things. She said, the hard part's preparing all the beds. And doing all that work ahead of time. And that's, you know, if you want to come back with a shovel then I appreciate your help then. And for me, that's, that's really representative of the kind of work that, you know, operations people do. They just have to do some hard work that maybe a lot of people don't recognize. Lots of people want to plant the flowers, but you have to do the hard work. And I think that's what we've seen certainly over the last year. This has been, you know, certainly unprecedented. This council will, will, will sit. Most of its time through a pandemic. Now, what you're doing is being accomplished through, you know, unprecedented times with unprecedented pressure, with unprecedented change. So, you know, I think we all have to keep that context in mind. You're doing this through a pandemic. All of the, the. Things that we're certainly doing at the town, I think the real benefit, the, the, the people who will benefit most from that will be the next council. Because we're putting a lot of things in place and, you know, I really appreciate the. The support this council is given because that next council, I think, is going to be in certainly a much better position. To help support the growth of this town. So, you know, I do want to thank our team. I'm very proud and grateful for the opportunity to be part of this team. I think I said that when I joined and I. I, I feel even stronger about that, having gone through what we've done this past year. And our town includes all the town staff, council, our residents, you know, and businesses, the committees and bores that we sit with, our neighbors and Tiny Tate. And Penitangishing, who we really collaborate extensively with. They're all important to what we do. I include policing in that as well. Being healthy and safe is a really important part of what we've done. But certainly dealing with a pandemic has been extremely significant and challenging for all of us. For all of us. It has taken anywhere between twenty to eighty percent of our capacity. Out of, out of our capabilities at times. When we get changes coming at us as they do frequently, and I'm talking about not just the town, I'm talking about businesses and residents. In order to adjust to all these things, we have to dedicate time and attention to dealing with that, new protocol calls, new procedures. Coming up with new ways to do things, dealing with supply shortages. All of those things have had an impact, yet we still, still made significant progress. That's what I'm so proud of. And all these people that work in all of our, our. Town staff. You know, they're residents of communities as well. They have the same struggles that all of us have. They're trying to pay their bills. They're trying to educate their kids. They're trying to deal with illness and sickness. You know, all of those things while still serving the town. They're very proud to do that. So I want to thank them most of all. For, for certainly their commitment to getting all of this work done. Literally everything we committed to, we've made progress on. I'm very, very, very proud of that. We've, we're certainly more agile. We're using data and technology much better than we have previously, and that is going to serve us very well. That's what will help us be much more sustainable as an organization because change is going to come at us. And to have the data available and the documented process available to sustain ourselves. Is an extremely important part that we've made with this team. We've created more teams of individuals looking at responsibilities. So with existing staff creating teams versus siloed, isolated people. And getting those people involved in the process. The most important one was the budget process. So we understand our numbers, we understand our commitments. And this budget process was led by that middle management group who brought those numbers forward. So we understand our business much better. Finding our way was really about understanding where we are first and then finding how we can get there. And I think we've done both. So really great progress on those, on those two fronts. Reviewing our priorities, tremendous amount of priorities that we had. You know, when we talk about our strategic priorities, some of the reviews that were done. And I think we found the right spot on what we want to look at. And we've made, if you look at your strategic priorities, you will see. You've almost hit everything. You've almost hit everything and we still have, you know, almost a year to go through this council. There's a few things we want to focus on in two thousand twenty two. But to make that much progress through a pandemic, I think, you know, everyone deserves a lot of credit and that includes the residents and businesses as well. A tremendous amount of changes, we know. Adapting, you know, implementing technology, things like ADP, which. Adapting, you know, implementing technology, things like ADP, which we've done. We're about to implement a new phone system, which will dramatically change our customer service. We've changed our budget process dramatically over the last two years and we've got a ten year plan looking at what we can do with our capital assets, a much better picture of our financial capabilities, significant challenges, yes. But we have a much better ability to make decisions. So when we present options to council, we can tell you the consequences. You know, the we looked at the traffic calming today and that's illustrative of the kind of professional advice I think you know, you get across the board. So to present those types of options effectively, professionally and being agile to adjust to the feedback we get from council and residents, I think is something, again, we should all be proud of. Procedural bylaw, you know, that is something that's, again, we committed to do as as one of those things and you were gathering input on that. And that's certainly part of making us effective in dealing with citizens. It's not certain, it's not intended to to take away any democratic processes at all. It's to allow the ability for more people to participate in the process. We have limited time, obviously, to deal with things, so we want to be effective in how we manage that. So that's the intent of some of those changes. But again, council and the public will determine what works best. But we've given you some advice on how to do that. Looking at our shared services model, another area that we, you know, committed to look at. And we've done that with our partners. And one of the things that I think, one of the benefits of of the pandemic, I think we'd all agree on is the amount of collaboration between councils, mayors, deputy mayors, county and municipalities, and particularly North Simcoe, Penetanguishing, Tiny Tay and Midland, I think have become even closer. Closer in how we know we need each other and how we can rely upon each other. And there's been many circumstances where we've been in need of something and they've been there to help us. And likewise, when they needed help, we were there to help them. So I think we're all stronger as a result of that. Our fee structure, we we committed to looking at our fee structure as well because we want, again, as we have a better understanding of what our costs are, we have to make sure that our fees can begin to recover those costs. And that's a really important part of being sustainable. To make sure those people who are using those services understand the costs of them, hopefully they see value in them and they're willing to pay for them. But to have a fee structure that is below cost just puts more burden on our taxpayers and that's not where we want to be. So I think all of those commitments that we made, you know, I think we've made tremendous progress on. It wasn't without a tremendous amount of work from council, from all of our staff, from our partners, as I said. And, you know, I'm really proud and grateful for for the commitment and everyone. I think it's been just a tremendous, tremendous effort under very, very trying circumstances. So I with that, if there's any questions that council would like to ask, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dino. It has not been easy for anybody and without the great residents and staff, the town of Midland, we could not have got through it. So thank you so much for leading the way. And I always say Midland, we do definitely have the greatest people and that's why we we've done so well during this pandemic. It hasn't been easy, it has not. But with your leadership and leadership we worship in the council, we've done a great job of getting where we can and let's hope we keep moving that Midland train forward. So thank you so much. Any questions or comments with regards to Mr. CEO's update? I'm not seeing any. I guess you covered it. We're going to move on to you next anyway. So but councillor May.
Uh, thank you. That's a great update and it's a great report. I just want to highlight the great efforts on the customer service, the CXO office. I even just, just the simple thing of taking a month, every month, just rewarding or acknowledging the great efforts from staff. I think it's just really great. I think that's a super, uh, it's just amazing gesture. It's a really great thing to just celebrate all the great staff and all the hard work that we've done. Just back to the notion, there's the three part report, talking about it like you just, as you just mentioned, strategic plan and also the service delivery review and all that stuff. You were mentioning that we've kind of achieved most of our strategic plans. Some of the stuff is ongoing and I'm just curious about your thoughts on the strategic plan and the final year of the term. And I guess a lot of that's going to be on the budget. But I I was just curious if you had any additional thoughts of some things that are right there, they're kind of on the back burner that they're within striking distance that may be the last year that we just need a little bit of emphasis and we focus to get some of these across the line. Thank you.
CEO.
Thank you. And through you, Deputy Mayor, to councillor May. Yes, there's, we reviewed all those those particular strategic programs that council came up with. And and as you know, there are three specific areas in the strategic plan. The first one, accountable, responsive, innovative governance. That was a lot of the work that was done this past year, you know, and again, a lot of it may be hidden from people, certainly council's aware of a lot of the work. But there's a tremendous amount of work that was done to make sure we're accountable, responsive and innovative. I think the one area that we'd like to to see some further development in that particular pillar was on community engagement. You know, I think the budget process is a good example where I think in fact, we've seen better community engagement than the previous budget process. We use a different survey mechanism, but I think we we'd still like to see if there are more ways we can we can get to our our residents and our businesses and actually engage with them. And council base plays a big part in that. Technology might play a big part of that, but we have to also be mindful of those people who are in that digital divide. So you know, people who don't have the means or or who aren't interested in using digital. So we want to make sure we can engage with them. So I'd say community engagement is one. The second pillar, which looks at economic and community development, I think that's a big opportunity. Because I think because of the pandemic, obviously, there's been some challenges with that. But, you know, we've been having discussions with EDC and S where all of all of the North Simcoe team has. I think we're excited to see what we can do together to encourage more attraction of businesses, retaining businesses in in our area. So all of those, I think, are a really important item in two thousand twenty two to focus on. The waterfront development, I think that's another item in terms of tremendous opportunity, very unique asset that we have. That benefits not just the waterfront, but the entire town. And that includes Midland Bay Landing, but the rest of the harbor. I think we've got an unparalleled unparalleled waterfront with a contiguous downtown that makes us so, so special. And I think that is is a tremendous opportunity for the entire town that we, you know, we want to make sure we do you know, carefully and in concert with what our public wants. Last area is about safe and sustainable, healthy communities, affordable housing, of course. Right? Affordable housing is so, so important for for the people of North Simcoe, not just Midland, but certainly we're a very big service oriented hub for the area. And to attract people to work in that that environment, we need an affordable, attainable place to live. So that's a really important part of our sustainable strategy. Empowering youth was part of that pillar, you know, and I think we can do more to empower, engage with our youth. That's something I think we'd like to focus on. And of course, the last thing I'd say is active transportation. People want to get out, you know, we want to get out safely. We have a tremendous, tremendous, again, assets when you think of our water, our lake, our trails. Just the beauty of our place, we should be able to, you know, take advantage of it more. And I think it attracts people to to come here, live here, work here, grow businesses here and, you know, spend their money here. Those would be the areas I I'd say we want to focus on. I think we're all, we're working on some of those. Some of those, I think, we need to kickstart a little bit more as as we get through some of the COVID recovery, but those are the areas I I'd like to see us focus on. And you'll see some of that in the budget.
Thank you very much, Mr. CEO. Appreciate it. Councillor Gordon.
Thanks. Just while we're talking about being responsive and engaging and then Middle Bay Landing came into it, maybe this is an opportune time just to give a quick update to the residents about, you know, when we make changes. Like when we scrape down whatever we're scraping down the earth for behind the new boardwalk or the the boulders that were put blocking the boat launch that, you know, officially isn't a boat launch, but we all know it's where the sleds and the ski huts and ATVs go on the ice and people do launch their boats there. When we make changes like that, just arbitrarily, I'm sure that there's a good reason for it. We don't know about it as a council and the community doesn't know about it because we don't talk about it. We don't send a blast out saying, hey, we're about to change access to public for something that they've had historically. So we get, you know, a picture on Facebook or a text message or someone calls me in the middle of the day at work going, what the hell did you just do to the, you know, the boat launch? And I'm like, what are you talking about? You know, I get an email from the town when there's a broken water main or we got a power outage, but we don't get any notification that, hey, we're about to go and dig up some polluted dirt at Middle Bay Landing or we're going to close off access to the the ramp. So these are things I think would, as many things as we've done right. And, you know, as much credit I can give to staff on how things have been getting better, I think we still have some work to do. We could probably cause ourselves a lot less grief if we communicated even more than we do now. Even if it's just among council because we're the ones or, you know, at least I seem to be, I'm sure councillor Chefsketter, people on social media tend to get pinged on things and almost immediately as they happen. And I'd love people to say, oh, yeah, I read about that this morning. They they did this for whatever reason. And if if there's a, if I don't agree with it, then, you know, fine, we come to council and we hash it out, but maybe I do and I can defend it. But I'm finding that we're falling down in some customer experience, you know, whether it's replying to emails, I won't get into the weeds on that one. CEO, and I'll be talking about that today. There's a few areas where I think we're falling short and it's easy to fix. And I would just like to see us, you know, keep working on that communications proactively with our residents about things that perhaps, you know, staff think, hey, it's no big deal. Well, when I tell council and we will press a release about this. But in fact, it is a big deal. And I think that there's a disconnect somewhere between what staff think is worthy of talking about publicly before or after they do it. And what we feel as the, you know, because we're, people are touching us every day about this. So I agree with your your update. I liked reading your report. There is a lot of really amazing things we've done. We still have lots of work to do. I'm not looking forward to this budget at all. When I'm reading on the news about places with, you know, six, seven percent budget increases and they're blending it down to four and a half and it's a big win. I am not looking forward to this in the slightest. But I know it's coming and I just think communications, collaboration, those are, those shouldn't just be buzzwords on our, you know, what aspirational goals, I think we can, we need to live those a little better than we're doing. I'm not saying we're failing. I just think we can do better.
He comes to Gordon, care to comment, Mr. CEO?
Yeah, thank you. And I, no, I certainly appreciate councillor Gordon's comments and I and I agree. I agree that I think we can do better on communication. I think we've come a long way. In terms of what we're communicating, I I certainly would prefer that we're taking the actions required, especially when it's around safety. We'll we'll take those first and if we're not communicating as as quickly as we would like, you know, I'll take that criticism. You know, some of that was done, you know, because of whether that was available to do some of that work. I don't think anyone should be surprised about the work that's being done to clean up an area like that. I think we've communicated that in the past. We tried to make some safety improvements down there. Unfortunately vandalism took, you know, took place two days later, which was very disappointing in that area. So I I absolutely agree. You know, we'd like to communicate everything we do, but we're we're really focused on on taking actions and trying to make things safe and trying to make things better. I think there also needs to be an element of trust, you know, given to the people who are doing the work. You know, and and, you know, there's, you know, people, I've seen, you know, some criticism. I don't think it's warranted at all. I think the people who are doing that work deserve that trust. I think they've earned that trust. They're taking care of this town. They're taking the care of this town when there's flooding. They're taking care of this town when when trees are down because of environmental concerns and they're only trying to make it better. And if we get something wrong, we'll correct it and we do that quickly. So, you know, I think there needs to be some tolerance with with that a bit. We'll we'll work hard on trying to make the communication better. Council is great at, you know, providing us direct feedback on what they get and hopefully we're being responsive to that. But it it will be difficult because we're trying to get things done so quickly sometimes to be perfect on it, but we will try.
Thank you very much, Mr. CEO. I'll move this on to the vote. All those in favor of moving this forward? So Kerry, you're also next up, so don't go anywhere, Mr. CEO. It's your weekly, sorry, council COVID update, Mr. CEO.
Thank you. It does. It does feel like weekly, but.
It does, doesn't it?
Yeah, I'll go through the situation on COVID. I think I think most of us have been been paying attention to the news and and what's going on and the situation isn't isn't great. As we know, the numbers are aren't going in the right direction. So, you know, I think we're all watching that very carefully. The numbers in in Simcoe Muskoka, if you look at the incident rate, it's actually higher than it is, you know, for the province. So we're seeing, we're seeing, you know, the numbers in our area climb a little quicker. So when you, when you look at Midland's incident rate, our incidence rate is about twenty seven per hundred thousand. And that's the Ontario number, twenty seven per hundred thousand people are infected by the by the pandemic. Simcoe Muskoka is around fifty five right now. Fifty five for one, one hundred thousand. So we've certainly seen a marked increase in in the incident rate within Simcoe Muskoka. Midland's still around that Ontario average, but still in Simcoe Muskoka, it's a little bit higher. In terms of what's happened in in the most recent time, there have been five, five new hospitalizations across Simcoe Muskoka, two two new deaths, unfortunately. Eighty seven percent of the population twelve and over has their first dose. And eighty four percent of the population in Simcoe Muskoka have two doses of the vaccine. For Midland, we have almost ninety percent first dose. And about eighty six point five percent have have both doses. So we're higher than the Simcoe Muskoka average in terms of the vaccination, which, you know, will certainly help our situation. Unfortunately, we're seeing, as we know, in October, there were zero cases in Midland. In November, there are, there have been to date nine cases, you know, we're seeing so far. So again, being cautious in terms of what's happening, we've seen the province pull back on expanding, you know, lifting the limits on some of those higher risk settings. They planned to do that in November. They paused that for right now. So we're certainly watching that and continuing to to listen to what our chief medical officer is is telling us. We're preparing as as we said before, we're expecting towards the end of November that, you know, we'll be vaccinating children twelve and under. The chief medical officer for the province made a comment on that today, that towards the end of November, we should start to see that in our facilities. We've offered them to the health unit and I'm, you know, quite certain that they'll be using that facility to help do that. During the weekend, we might see one of the mobile units over at the rec center. There's some hockey tournaments going on there. So we're going to make a mobile unit available for people who want to get vaccinated. You know, while they're there to to make it efficient for them. So we're continuing to support the community with those types of activities. Our staff are all all in compliance with our vaccination procedure that we put in place. So you know, certainly the public can can feel rest assured that every one of our staff are in compliance with that. And I really want to thank all of our staff and the people who are helping to administer that policy for doing that, including the Chamber of Commerce. They've been really great on supporting our testing, you know, requirements that we have. So thanks to them for doing that. The other, the other thing I want to mention, because I know it is is topical, I'm gonna just make a quick adjustment to my background because I want to change the tone because I know we've we've been commenting on, you know, the pandemic, but I want to remind everybody that Christmas is coming. And our BIA and civitans have done a tremendous job in planning, you know, celebrating Christmas in the downtown core. That group is is, I don't want to steal their thunder, you're going to see a lot of this advertised across all the social media feeds. And I think they're going to be doing some print advertising as well. But really thanks to the BIA for leading this effort to making sure that we can celebrate and support our businesses downtown. They're going to have, you know, tremendous activities going on and they're going to be, the displays will be, you saw them last year, they were just, they were really quite stunning and beautiful. I think we can expect to see similar things. And the civitans will have a float, static float, you know, that people will be able to see. And I think there'll be a visit by a certain person who might show up at some point. So that's all all great news. And I really want to thank those groups for coming together to make sure we can continue to celebrate. So with that, unless there's any questions, I'll turn it back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. CEO. Any questions or comments with regards to this, councillor May?
So I want to make a quick comment. There was a really interesting Toronto Star article that was basically reminding everyone masks are the last line of defense and really trying to masks are the last line of defense and really trying to promote mask adherence and how they're so effective. And really try to remind people not to let it slip at all or fall under your nose and really try to keep it tight and uh, it stay fresh. And also reading the news that Canada might even be looking at getting Johnson Johnson vaccines. I think Alberta is already getting some uh, for the remaining population who have been very hesitant towards the M N R A vaccines. Uh, have them, give them an option and, and people are actually gonna take them up on that. So I think that's great. The goal is try to get everybody vaccinated, whichever vaccine is available. So it's great that we're gonna have more tools in the toolkit for that. So thank you.
Your worship?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to uh, point out that for those, the population like me are seventy and over, you can now get your third booster shot. Um, you can register for that. And uh, there are other P, uh, groups that are uh, eligible for that shot now. Uh, there is conversation and in the new year, they may open it up to a wider group, um, fourteen over, perhaps the entire population. But at the moment, you can go on a provincial, the provincial website, uh, and they'll list the criteria. And then that will take you to a point where if you beat the criteria, uh, you can register for that third shot. And I, I encourage everybody, if you're not vaccinated, first line defenses is, is getting vaccinated. Uh, we're seeing the results of uh, almost every night on national news where you have people, you know, people being transported from province to province who haven't been vaccinated, ended up in ICU, they're flooding ICUs now. And uh, people coming this uh, from Saskatchewan to Ontario, for example. Ontario, I will say Ontario seems to be leading the way in terms of uh, vaccination rates per, per capita. And uh, thanks to all our residents for doing such a great job. Please, if you, uh, if you haven't done your vaccine, please do it. And uh, and for those of you eligible for your third shot, uh, I said, I would strongly suggest you do that. And I believe as Counselor Maine might suggested the last meeting, get your flu shot. And, and that will help us to keep the uh, congestion down in our ICUs. Thank you.
Thank you worship. Any other questions or comments? I see none. Uh, we'll move on to notice the motion. Uh, Counselor Cunningham?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to end up having Sherry help me with the wording on this, but at this point it is a motion that a community safety zone be implemented on Midland Point Road at or around the Portage Park bus stop during this budget cycle and that staff come back with recommendations.
Thank you very much, Counselor Cunningham. We'll look forward to having that great discussion in two weeks from now. Thank you. Any other notice of motion to come forward from this meeting tonight? I see none. Uh, announcements, any announcements uh, with regards to, I have your worship and then Counselor Maine?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, the CEO spoke to the importance of housing in terms of not only from a social obligation perspective, but also from an economic development perspective. And uh, we, uh, the how, the uh, council's committee on housing will be holding a town hall on December sixth, uh, starting seven PM to solicit input uh, from members of the community. Uh, you can ask your questions, uh, you can register to participate in person or you can uh, register a question through uh, writing this, uh, writing to the clerks at midland.ca. And uh, we look forward to a robust conversation around uh, what's known as attainable housing. Uh, there'll be some speakers at the beginning just talking about situation in Midland. Responsibilities of other levels of government, changes with respect to housing initiatives from the federal and provincial governments, so on. So that's December sixth to seven PM. Please uh, see some announcements in the paper. I think uh, maybe even tonight I have read the paper, my paper, but um, please, if you can participate and uh, tune in and listen to what's going on. Secondly, there is a process going on. It's called municipal comprehensive review. And what that is, is a um, county is being, is being told by the province to review uh, the uh, the um, being growth allocations basically across the county. And it, it had deals with the four pillars that they're looking at are agriculture, natural heritage systems, climate change and um, watershed management. County council is going to have a meeting on December the ninth. It will be, I think, broadcast on YouTube channel. One PM. And uh, the, this area will influence the prosperity of not only Midland, but more Simcoe, all the county with thirty years to come. So if you, if you have any time at all, uh, I would encourage you to, to view, view the meeting. It's a singularly important meeting. Uh, and it's uh, I think will be very informative for folks. And finally, uh, I already covered the last one, which was the booster. So thank you very much, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much. Counselor Maine?
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor. Uh, quickly, just want to uh, congratulations to the Heronia players. Um, the show is ongoing. I don't know if there's any tickets available for the last five years, which is not about the pandemic. So congratulations to the two-person show of Holly Archer and Pete Flood. Also want to recommend everyone check out the amazing Andy Trudeau MCC Indigenous Gallery exhibit. Uh, it was all inspired by somebody asking what a scoot was and inspired a Mr. Trudeau to sketch out um, pictures of the scoot and, and images of his, of childhood. Uh, it's a really, a really cool uh, gallery. And uh, a couple uh, shout-outs, uh, want to give a shout-out to Tracy Roxborough is departing S S E A Sustainable Sound. Just want to say thank you to Tracy for all her efforts uh, with sustainability in the town in Midland. She got the town back on track with those uh, climate change initiatives, got the town up and running with the uh, FCM milestones. Uh, so she did an amazing effort on that. And so we thank her for all her efforts. A huge shout-out to Chris McLaughlin, who is departing the North Simcoe Community Future Development Corporation. I'm not sure where he's going, but he's unfortunately leaving us. So thanks to Chris for his efforts. He was just an absolute delight, uh, and it made a lot of people happy days by tapping into some innovative uh, loans for small businesses. And finally, uh, happy birthday and happy retirement to the Honorable Justice Robert Maine, my father, next Wednesday. Uh, with that, it ends his judicial career. And so we want to give him a shout-out, happy birthday. And I want to say thank you to Karen DeRush, because he swore uh, the council in for the twenty-fourteen term. And that was a real highlight. So I want to say thank you to Karen. That was a real classy touch. And so thank you uh, to my dad. Happy birthday.
Good luck, Mr. Maine. Happy birthday and uh, happy retirement. Counselor Chesky?
I think it's your chair. This is my uh, annual Movember speech. And uh, you know, if I didn't uh, if I didn't take the opportunity, why bother growing this uh, big thing on my face every year? So I'm grateful to have the opportunity every November to discuss men's mental and physical health. I think it's so important and so under talked about. I think this year we really should be focused on everybody's mental and physical health. I think we've been so laser focused on COVID. Uh, we're seeing a lot of mental health issues in our community. Uh, tragically lost somebody in the last few weeks that I went to high school with, suicide. Um, we've lost, we're seeing twenty-plus people per week uh, for opioid uh, accidental overdoses in hospitals. So I think it's such a trying time for all of us and you know, Movember is a fun and quirky thing, but it, it's really attached to a really solid and really important cause. So I think it's funny to look funny and uh, for the month of November, but I, I do think it's a very serious topic. And I do think that if you need help, you should reach out to people that you trust and people that you care about. Um, you know, reach out to your friends, reach out to your family, because uh, as it's been said multiple times at this meeting, we've all struggled for the last few years. So uh, don't hesitate to reach out, uh, if you need help. Um, that, you know, Movember's fun and everything, but this is a very serious topic. And uh, I support men's mental and physical health. I support everybody's mental and physical health. And I, I hope everybody's staying together uh, during these trying times. Hope we can have as close to a normal Christmas as uh, as we have for the last few years. And um, I hope this all goes away like everybody else. So happy, no, happy Movember and not such a happy cause, but um, reach out if you need it. Thank you.
Well said, Counselor Chesky. Thank you so much. Counselor Gordon?
Thanks. And on the heels of Counselor Oshewski's uh, Movember shout-out, I'm gonna not repeat my last meeting uh, blunder, but uh, I had expressed a obvious support for this. I don't do a good job of growing these things. Takes me a few months. Uh, but I am trying and I was jokingly trying to suggest that women support this cause wholeheartedly too. There's an entire, you can just Google it if you want to see, women are supporting this as well. But I did jokingly make a mention, uh, innocently enough, but I offended at least one person by suggesting that women can grow mustaches. So um, not my intention uh, to offend anybody. Somebody put an email in. Uh, there was somebody who blots it back and forth between the CEO and the mayor and myself. Uh, and I su- I suspect that person has the apology now. If not, they're watching tonight. I'm sorry if I offended you by that comment. I am very happy to say that women do support this cause. However, uh, an insensitive little joke that I find funny, it doesn't necessarily resonate with all of our viewing audience. And for that, I apologize. I just wanted to uh, pass that along. Um, hopefully this has become a, a two-week segment, Bill's apologies. But uh, at any rate, I just wanted to get that out there today and uh, concur with Counselor Oshewski's urging about uh, Movember and the cause and what it stands for and mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gordon. Any other announcements? I just wanted to make one correction. I, uh, earlier in the meeting, the, your, the mayor uh, brought up that he was in the seventy-plus group. He actually isn't in the seventy-plus group. He will be uh, joining the seventy group uh, next uh, Friday, November twenty-sixth. So I would be like the uh, on behalf of council and uh, staff, wish you a very happy birthday. So uh, welcome to the seventies. Uh, all right, that ends this um, committee of whole move by Counselor Pro, second by Counselor Maine, that the committee of whole rise and report. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? So Kerry, your worship, you're up.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. And uh, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those everything seems to start falling apart around seventy, but I'm told it's the new sixty, so I'll go with that for now. Thanks for the birthday wishes. Uh, so I have a motion here moved by uh, Counselor Post, seconded by Counselor Shewski, that the recommendations of the committee of the whole for the meeting of November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one be adopted as resolution. Need comments or questions with respect to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, that carries. I now have a motion by um, Counselor Maine, seconded by Counselor Downer. Just to make sure I'm in the right spot here on this before I put in. Sorry, uh, we don't have any motions for which notice was given. I should point that out. I do have uh, under bylaws, motion moved by Counselor Maine, seconded by Counselor Downer, that bylaw twenty-twenty-one dash three-three being a bylaw to amend signed by law two zero one one dash seven nine respecting one six eight four five highway twelve. Be passed and enacted. This is signed each, the uh, the Walmart we discussed a time ago. Counselor Maine?
Your worship, uh, did we not have a notice of motion on uh, dark sky policy from Counselor Gordon?
Uh, it was withdrawn for uh, uh, subject. Uh, the council is going to be looking at some uh,
Okay, thank you.
Further information. So, thank you. Um, so uh, council, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries. Now, moved by Counselor Downer, seconded by Counselor Cunningham, that bylaw twenty-twenty-one dash five-one being a bylaw to adopt the proceeding to the regular council meeting held November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, and to authorize its execution. Uh, council, you've heard the motion, questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you again, that carries. And I believe the final motion for the evening moved by Counselor Gordon, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ross, that this regular meeting of council adjourn at nine oh two PM. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, council. It's a great conversation as usual about the uh, agenda items. Have a great week.